Everyone, welcome to the Board of Education's Business Meeting this Thursday, November 21st. Can I ask everyone to please rise for the pledge?
Sledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening, we have the distinct honor and pleasure of recognizing our Advanced Placement AP Scholars. Wanda?
So good evening, good evening. So as you all know, one of the best part of this job, right, is to be able to recognize our exceptional students. And tonight, we have 51 students that took advanced level courses. And what that mean is, yes. And what this means is that they're so dedicated that they have been able to take college-level work at the high school. And this evening, I'm going to start calling you, okay? So AP Scholar, what does that mean? That means it's an award granted to students who score a three or higher on at least three AP exams. Not one, three, that's the equivalent of three college credits. And we have the following students, if you are here, please stand up. Angel Argueta, Yaliza Benitez, Jensy Canadas, Alejandra Diaz Lopez, Joel Espinoza, if you're here, stand up, I need you in front. Don't be shy. Joel Espinoza.
Stay standing, right?
Yeah, stay standing. Santiago Feliciano, Jacqueline Flores, Nimer Garcia, Gabi Giron, Samantha Green, Yaselia Harris, Kevin Hidalgo, Sofia Lopez, Victor Lopez, Shazai Mahmood, Adriana Mosquera, Joseph Nunez, Noah Petus, Lydanna, Lydanna Pierre-Louis, Deira Quiñones, Khalid Ramda, Josué Ramos, Jasmine Thompson, and Nicolina Volpes. Congratulations. Now we have the AP Scholar with Honor. And this award is granted to students with an average score of 3.25 on all AP exams and score of a 3+ on at least four exams. So we have Elmer Argueta, Wilmer Argueta, Toselin Atiensia, Yaselin Benitez, Adonis Carranza, Diamond Harris, Michael Martinez, Jennifer Ramirez, Suleika Rivera, and Amy Rojas. Now we have AP Scholar with Distinction. What that means is it's granted to students with an average score of 3.5+ on all AP exams and scores of a 3 point higher on at least five exams. So we have Farah Al-Safarani, Jesús Chávez, Elizabeth Cruz, Mika Fairweather, Josué Flores, Karina Fuentes, Jessica Hill, Chantel Larvy, Dave Lozano, Anaya Narayn, Stephanie Pence, Zaira Quatri, Jaydan Bramares, Marley Reno, Anthony Reyes, and Matias Serrano. Now, the next category that we have here, we made history in Brentwood. Because we have one student that for the first time in the history of Brentwood, received an AP Capstone diploma. And what that means is, is granted to students who earn scores of three or higher in AP Seminar, AP Research, and four additional AP courses. Demonstrating advanced skills in research, collaboration, and communication. Can we please have Matias Serrano stand up? I would like to thank your teachers, your parents, the guidance department, and all the administrators who make this possible. But I really want to thank you for your dedication, for ensuring that you're studying every day. And I know that sometimes, you know, it's better to go out and have fun, but I know that you're dedicating your time right now to your studies. And trust me, this is going to take you places that you would never imagine, alright? So thank you. Now we want you all here. Oh, yes, you have to stand up now, yes.
So we have certificates for each of you, but before we distribute them, thank you for being scholars and leaders in this district. There are so many children who are looking up to you whether you believe it or not, and they're saying, if they can do it, so can I. So thank you. Come join us.
Okay, alright, AP Scholars. There's a lot of cameras happening, everybody's excited, but just for the next like five seconds, if you just look at my camera, that would be wonderful. Congratulations guys, big smiles. Big smiles. Okay, thank you.
I almost bowled myself to the ground.
Oh my god. Yes, make sure that you get your snacks, please. Yeah, they have to get their snacks.
It's so cold, like I'm sugar, so I put the scarf on to get it. Thank you.
Why are you smiling?
So excited for our retreat, I can't wait to just sit.
I want to... I forget to say something to the parents, I want to say something to the parents.
I got some ones from a parent.
So congratulations, everyone again, and to the parents here, thank you. Thank you to the parents. Muchas gracias a los padres por tener unos hijos tan hermosos y por prestárnolos un ratito. Okay, muchas gracias. And I hope that you don't forget your snacks. You know that if you come to the Board of Education, we always, you know, have snacks for you. So, they're here. Maria, did they all get the snack? Do you know, did they? They did it, thank you, thank you so much, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move forward with our presentations from the student liaisons, Farah Al-Safarani and Samuel Hasfell.
Good evening and thank you for having us. I just want to say congratulations to everybody who got their award today. You guys did amazing job and you deserved it and earned everything you got. So this week, we had College and Career Week, and that was an amazing week for the school district. I'd like to discuss what happened and what events we had at our school. So on Monday, we had, if I can, I can't remember off the top. Long week. On Monday, we had Don't Sleep on Your Future, so students came to school wearing PJs, and I think that was the most popular event of the week. On the second day, on Tuesday, we had Your Future is Bright, Wear Neon. And on Wednesday, we had Wear Your College Shirts. On Thursday, which was today, we had Dress for Success. So many students came to school wearing suits, and they looked very successful. And tomorrow, we will have Wear Brentwood Colors. And that's going to be another form of Green and White Day. So I think it's gonna look amazing, a bunch of, a sea of green, green and white. This weekend, we're going to have a community food drive at the high school. And ROTC is going away for their competition, so we wish them good luck, and I will be going with them. So, oh, this is your phone, sorry. And so she's going to discuss other...
Some students were selected for Nissma Allstate, and they're performing upstate, and we wish them all good luck. And we actually had an annual blood drive this week, and it started yesterday, so they closed off the gym, and it's still going on today. And also... And also, we had a selection of career cluster in Navion, so we were able to find like which career we are suitable for, especially the seniors at the high school. And then there are fall and winter sports starting soon, such as swimming, wrestling, boys' and girls' basketball, bowling, fencing, and even the cheer team starts their competition. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Have a good night.
So I just want to remind everyone at home that the group chat is available and open for questions. I will begin the next portion of our meeting with questions on agenda items. Do we have anyone in the audience with questions on agenda items only? So, Mr. Moss, your question is, are you still moving forward with this? So, can you clarify what this is, if you don't mind?
Sure, I wrote the agenda item on the paper.
No.
It doesn't say.
It doesn't say.
D1F?
Oh, sorry. My apologies, it's there. I'm looking at the question area, I should...
Okay, yeah.
I apologize.
So my question is about D1F. D1F is the mascot resolution. I have, of course, spoken to the district on a couple of occasions about the issues of moving from a one racial group to another racial group as a logo, as a team name, and as a mascot. We have a logo, the B. We have a team name, Brentwood. We don't necessarily need to change our mascot to the Spartans. It's not a need.
Okay.
It's a, it's a desire, and it's a choice that is a racial choice. And as your local president of the NAACP, I'm here to tell you that that's what that is.
Thank you, and the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Are we moving forward with the vote on the mascot resolution? And yes, we are moving forward with the vote for the mascot resolution. Are there any other questions on agenda items only from the audience? I don't have it. Do you have it, Kathy? Just a reminder that we have a three-minute rule.
Is it three minutes per question?
No, three minutes. Three minutes total, sir. You know the rules, Andy. Give me a second, I don't want to cheat you out of a second.
Don't worry, I won't.
I know that's for sure.
Oh, thank you, buddy.
Let me know when you're ready, Andy.
What's that?
Let me know when you're ready.
Does it start with the end, like in Jeopardy? Does it start at the end of the question? Okay.
You know the rules.
Alright, I'm gonna, Billy just brought up D1F, okay? I didn't hear everything he said, but do we even need a mascot?
No.
People can, you know, they don't say we're going to the Indians. They say they're going to Brentwood. No matter if it's for a little league across the street, or, or the state park, or anything. Okay? We don't need a mascot. Second, has anybody considered tableing this? Because according to the paperwork I got, we don't have to make this decision until June. So why are we doing it seven months beforehand? Okay? Let's table it. I haven't seen one notice of a community meeting, alright, where we're discussing this, and I check my emails every day. When Wes Black was here, we had community meetings in New York, right in this room, with people. When Rich was here, same thing, alright? Now, all of a sudden, we don't have a community meeting on this? Alright, I heard that there were like 4,000 people who voted for Spartans? Okay? I don't care if it's one, alright? Do they know the history of the Spartans? They were slave owners. Yeah, make the faces, I don't care, people. They were slave owners. They killed kids with special needs. Alright? They also killed women, young girls, if their mother had too many girls in the family. I did my homework. You guys haven't. Don't pick a mascot name, wait till the end. There are court cases going on, alright? And as Admiral Pearl Harbor said, you might be waking up a sleeping giant. Alright? Alright, my next one is on B2B. Go ahead. B2B, let me get you. Stop my car, I ain't asking, you're crazy. B2B. How's that the last one you haven't even brought up? Nobody brought it up in between, because I haven't seen anything on the school page, alright, or on the Facebook pages, that I belong to, about 27 of them. B2B, Title IX Compliance. Well, what does that mean? Are we allowing young men to play in women's sports now?
This is, you want me to answer the question?
I don't care who answers it, hopefully a board member.
We have, right now, we have a new Director of Programs and Policies, and we're adding him as a Title IX Compliance Officer. And this is Dr. Liani.
Do we allow young men to play in girl's sports at this time?
That has nothing to do with that.
Well, it's under Title IX. Title IX is for women's sports.
Right, but this is not what we're doing here now.
I understand that, but I'm talking about Title IX. Title IX, this is for the compliance officer. I say in our Title IX, or do you want me to wait till the end to ask this question? On, on agenda items?
We are not speaking about sports right now. This has to do with investigations that we have here within the district.
For harassment.
For sexual harassment, yes.
Allegations of...
So I'll wait till the end to ask the other one, because I have another sheet for questions at the end. Alright, what was policy number, B2D? What is policy 5114?
Stacy?
That is a suspension policy, that the last time that it was revised was in 1999. And right now, it's embedded within our dress code. So all the information there.
Is that ever discussed in public here?
What was discussed in public?
Well, you're changing a policy.
I'm not changing a policy. Everything that is in that policy is actually in our Code of Conduct.
It says, "You hereby rescind policy 1514." Rescind means to take away.
Because we don't need that policy. It is embedded within our Code of Conduct.
Has that been discussed in public? In an open meeting, according to the open meeting law?
Right, we consulted with our lawyers, and we have Dr. Vins...
Okay, I'll ask it to the attorney then. Was it discussed in an open meeting area in public?
The board, when they are adopting new policies or they're revising policies, they generally put it on for a first reading, and the public has an opportunity to comment, and then a second reading. This is a different scenario. They're not adding a new policy or revising a policy.
Yes, they are revising a policy. It says revised policy number.
It says rescind.
Rescind, I'm sorry, which is revising it. It's taking something away from the policy.
I don't agree with you, Mr. Cuomo. They're getting rid of a policy that is no longer needed because it's already embedded into another policy.
It should be still discussed in public. It's open meeting law, and you should know that, alright? Terry Wagner would be turning over in her grave right now, because she was a very strong advocate for the open meeting law that the public hears what the board is doing. Things shouldn't be done in private. Those are the only two I had for this. I'll have more later on.
Okay. I'm gonna preface it before we move on, that we conduct ourselves in a respectful way here.
I am too.
I'm gonna say, please speak to anyone on this dais in a respectful manner, or else I will terminate any questions you have going forward. We're not gonna allow this. We're not, I'm not gonna, it's not open for discussion. I am not going to allow it. Period, end of story, and that's all we have to say. Let's move forward in mutual respect for each other.
And I have. I have always treated this board with respect.
The way you're speaking is unappreciated.
I am speaking loud, because that's me.
Well, then fix it.
Yeah, get a better microphone, or get some better mic to use it.
No.
Yeah, okay.
We're gonna move forward nicely. If not, we won't move forward at all.
I always do.
I'm not gonna take much more time.
Don't.
I've already said it.
I still got a couple of minutes.
I've already said it. Thank you.
I told you she was worse than George. Thank you, sweetheart.
You can say whatever you want, but we can also escort you out if you'd like. Which do you prefer? Do you want to continue? I prefer not to. I prefer not to. Don't push it. Because I'm not going to allow disrespect. I am not, you're talking under your breath, and I can hear you. And if you want to hurl insults, if you want to hurl insults, we can do the same, but I prefer not to.
How did I insult you, please? How did I insult you?
We're gonna move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Be it resolved that the following items be approved, B1A through B1M. I need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by, I'm sorry, Julia Burgos, I need a second?
Second.
Second by Brandon Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstentions? So moved. Be it resolved that the following items be approved, B2A through B2X. I need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Cindy Safari, I need a second?
Second.
Second by Julia Burgos, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstentions? So moved. Be it resolved that the following items be approved, C1A and C1B. I need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second?
Second.
Second by Eileen Harmon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstentions? So moved. D1A, Appointments, Resignations, and Leaves, Certificated Personnel. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Certificated Personnel Action Report contained in the Board Packet for the November 21st, 2024 Board Meeting. Sorry. I need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos, I need a second?
Second.
Second by Maria Malave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved.
Abstentions.
Thank you. One second. Thank you. D1B, Appointments, Resignations, and Leaves, Non-Certificated Personnel. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Non-Certificated Personnel Action Report contained in the Board Packet for the November 21st, 2024 Board Meeting. I need a motion?
Motion. Oh. Sorry.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed, I need a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Brandon Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstentions? So moved. D1C, Use of Facilities by NAACP. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the President of the Board of Education is hereby authorized to permit an exemption to the Board of Education Policy Number 1500, Use of School Facilities to waive the building usage fee for the NAACP to hold Long Island ACTSO workshops from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM at North Middle School on the following dates, December 14th, 2024, January 11th, and 25th, 2025, February 8th and 28th, 2025, March 5th and 29th, 2025, and April 12th, 2025. I need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second?
Second.
Second by Hassan Ahmed, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstentions? So moved. D1D, Amendment to Employment Agreement. Be it resolved that the Board President is authorized to execute an amendment dated November 21st, 2024 to the Employment Agreement with Kevin O'Reilly as interim coordinator of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics, which amendment has been reviewed by the Board of Education. I need a motion? Motion by Julia Burgos, I need a second?
Second.
Second by Eileen Harmon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstentions? So moved. D1E, Creation of Administrative Position, Director of Information Technology and Libraries. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby creates the position of Director of Information Technology and Libraries effective November 21st, 2024. And be it resolved that the above newly created position shall be an 11-month full-time position, which shall be accreted to the BIPSO. And be it further resolved that, effective November 21st, 2024, the Table of Organization shall be amended to reflect that the Director of Information Technology and Libraries shall report to the Superintendent of Schools. And be it further resolved that the Director of Information Technology and Libraries shall be remunerated, sorry, at a salary set forth in the negotiated agreement between the Brentwood Union Free School District and the Brentwood Principals and Supervisors Organization, BIPSO. I need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed, I need a second?
Second.
Second by Maria Malave, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstentions? So moved. Sorry. D1F, Mascot Resolution. D1F, as in Frank. As in Frank, page 27. Good? Okay. Whereas in 2001, former Commissioner of Education, Richard P. Mills issued a memorandum concluding that the use of Native American symbols or depictions as mascots can become a barrier to building a safe and nurturing school, community, and improving academic achievement for all students. And whereas, in 2001, Commissioner Mills asked Board of Education to end the use of Native American mascots as soon as practical. And whereas, on April 18th, 2023, the New York State Board of Regents adopted a new Part 123 of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education, 8NYCRR, Part 123 relating to the use of Indigenous teams' names, logos, or mascots at public schools. And whereas, 8NYCRR, Part 123, the regulation, requires school districts which currently use Indigenous team names, logos, and mascots to commit via resolution prior to June 30th, 2023, to eliminate the use of all Indigenous names, logos, or mascots by the end of the 2024-2025 school year. And whereas, on June 22nd, 2023, the Brentwood Union Free School District, the district, adopted a resolution to eliminate the use of all Indigenous names, logos, and/or mascots. And whereas, in its interpretation of the regulation, the New York State Education Department has advised that the elimination of the use of Indigenous names, logos, and mascots encompasses the continued use of vestiges of said names, logos, or mascots. And whereas, a community survey and extensive community input went into the selection process of a new team name, logo, and mascot. Be it resolved that on or before the conclusion of the 2024-2025 school year, the new team name shall be the Brentwood Spartans, and the new team logo... the new team name shall be the Brentwood Spartans and the new team logo and mascot should be implemented. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Eileen Harmon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No's, abstentions, so moved. D one G, Administrative Table of Organization, Coordinator of Special Services, Elementary. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Caitlin Ditmeyer as Coordinator of Special Services, Elementary, for a four-year probationary period effective January sixth, twenty-twenty-five through January fifth, twenty-twenty-nine, at a salary as set forth in the negotiated agreement between the Brentwood Union Free School District and the Brentwood Principals and Supervisors Organization, BIPSO. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Julia Burgos, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstained.
No's?
Abstained.
So moved. Congratulations, Caitlin. E one A, Student Enrollment Figures. As of September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, our student enrollment was eighteen thousand sixty-seven. And as of October twenty-fifth, we had a total enrollment of seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. Our special services enrollment figures in elementary, we have one thousand three hundred and forty-five. Middle school, six hundred and thirty-one. Our freshman campus, two hundred and two. Senior high school, six hundred and twenty-five. Attending out-of-district schools, K through twelve, are four hundred and sixty-eight students. Resource room-related services, fifty-six. Home hospital OOD, none. Approved preschool programs, three hundred and ninety-two. Related services, preschool programs, a hundred and sixty-six. F one through seven are miscellaneous items for information only. Board action memos for October twenty, I'm sorry, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, Board of Education Business Meeting. Our principals' report, our minutes of the October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four Secondary Leadership Meeting, minutes of the October eighteenth Elementary Leadership Team Meeting. The Board of Education Workshop on December, will take place on Tuesday, December third, twenty-twenty-four. We will have our eleventh annual Christmas tree lighting at the high school on Friday, December thirteenth. And Board of Education Business Meeting will be, our next Board of Education Business Meeting will transpire on Thursday, December nineteenth. Wanted all the new business?
As you all know, Sammy and Farah have taken my job. They don't, you know, they present all the highlights. So I just want to add one more thing. On Saturday, November twenty-third at ten AM, we will host the third Northwell Community Food Drive. We're going to have this at the high school. I don't think he mentioned that, right? I don't, I don't think.
Yeah, he did.
He did? You see? I don't know what else to say, right? So he just, he took my job. But now, yes, okay, very nice. So we have that on Saturday. We expect, we have, we will probably have food for one more, you know, for a thousand families, so please stop by.
I'm sorry, what are the hours?
From ten, at ten o'clock, they start at ten o'clock, yes, in the morning. Okay, at the high school. Also, as Sammy mentioned, this week we have been immersed in what is called College and Career Week. And actually, the entire month. And I have a key person here, a key leader, that actually helped us ensure that this week has been a success. Our students have been exposed to a plethora of things related to career and college. And I would love for you, Wen of Venice, to come up and speak about your role with this initiative and all the great things that happened through, in the district, from kindergarten all the way through grade twelve.
Okay, that's better. First, I want to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to have this week along with our superintendent, encouraging us to move forward district-wide with this endeavor. Our cabinet and all the principals who supported it district-wide. So this is the first time we've done this and it's been a huge success. The conversations I've had with students have been incredible. And just one of the students here tonight, as they were leaving, I had mentioned to Samuel, I said, he mentioned some of the activities that we had, but he mentioned the fun things like wearing pajamas, but he didn't mention all the engagement and the activities that we, other things that we actually did that were educational. So I'm going to share a few things with you. So one of the students said to me, you know, I never learned so much about my teachers. And the reason for that is on day one, we started with a scavenger hunt. And I'll just hand this out so you can take a look at some of the questions that we gave. So if you take a look at the scavenger hunt, there's many questions on there where the students, and this was sixth grade through twelfth grade, where they would go around the school, ask teachers where they went to school, if they went to a two-year school, if they went to trade school, if they went to military, if they were the first in their family to go to college. And they just had the open conversation with the teachers about what they did to get to their position in here in Brentwood. And this was open to not only teachers, but any staff members in the building. The second document that I gave you there is called What is My Plus? So we had students from grades six through twelve do a career interest profiler, okay? And it's in Navyance, and this is the first time we've had roughly eight thousand students complete this during the week. So at the high school, we had one day where we gave it to all the students. And it's a platform that's on the internet, it's in Navyance. And the students completed, takes about a half an hour, and it gives them different clusters which would identify with their interests. So because we have graduation plus, this was a perfect time to give the students this interest inventory and identify exactly where their interests lie and if they match with their career choice. And many of the students learned that some of their interests led them in a different path. And at that point, conversation took place and some of them decided to stay with what they want to do. And some of them, you know, learned about other things. So that was an incredible feat, having that many students do it. And now we can pull that data right out of Navyance and import it into eSchool. So the school counselors and teachers can see it right in eSchool, they can see where the students' interests lie. And they can have conversations and select classes based on those career interests. So that was fantastic. Tomorrow, we're actually going to have a, at the high school, the scavenger hunt, the students that turned it in and completed it. We're going to raffle off twenty-five dollar gift cards. We have like ten at each middle school and a bunch at the high school. And we're going to display the What is My Plus in the D P Center. And we have all the clusters and we're going to match the clusters up with what, where the students lie and, you know, display them all. So tomorrow's going to be a culmination at the high school. And middle schools have something a little different planned, but similar. At the elementary level, all week, they've had activities as well. So I'm sure you've seen some of the pictures that we've had online this week. They did some interest inventories at those levels as well, just obviously geared for their level. I did send a photo over to Evanya today with one of the kindergarten classes with the students. They had a worksheet and they had When I Grow Up, I Want to Be, and they drew, you know, a picture of what they wanted to be. Today, I saw some photos from North Middle School. Where the students were dressed up and today it was called Dress for Success at that building. And the students dressed up, not for success necessarily, but as the career they wanted to be. So if you see some of the pictures from there, you have a few students dressed as a contractor or a lawyer or a business person. But it was really exciting for them and they had a great time with it. The feedback that I got from the counselors and staff was, it was fantastic. I got testimonials here, I won't read them, I won't do that, but lots of great feedback, a lot of great activities. I'm sure the kids went home and spoke to their parents about all the things that we did this week. And, you know, I hope the building principals and other administrators enjoyed the week. And we just learned so much about our students. It was, it was fantastic. So, thank you.
Thank you, Wen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wen, and thank you to the guidance department, to the teachers, to the administrators for ensuring that we had these activities throughout kindergarten through grade twelve. And Eileen, as we approach Thanksgiving, right? It is next week, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to lead this district. Thank you to all our students. And, you know, thank you for the AP exams. The students that were here, they were able to, we were able to increase that also because this board approved to pay for these AP exams. So that, you know, we went from having ten kids, now we have fifty-one AP scholars and others, although, you know, that also took the test. So thank you for that and thank you for the partnership and thank you for sharing the vision that we have. And thank you to my amazing cabinet, that is, and all the teachers that are here for everything. That's all that I can say.
Okay, so that moves us to our public comment portion of this evening. Mr. Moss?
Hello, my name is William Moss. I am a long-term resident of the Brentwood community. I'm also a school administrator. I'm also a former Brentwood teacher of eleven years. I taught at Brentwood High School mathematics, as well as Brentwood North Middle School mathematics. I am also a parent of two students here in the community, as well as a parent of a Brentwood graduate. I am very disturbed by the vote that took place tonight with regard to the Spartans. I think it's very clear that a racial choice has been made. When you move from one race, the Native American race, the Indians, to the Spartans, which is clearly a Greece, a Greek European racial group, that that is a racial choice on its face. And your legal advice should have told you just as much. So, the fact that this has moved forward with full warning from the NAACP, from myself, that this is a problem for people of color is very disturbing. So I'm going to read this to you. This is directly from the ISUP Town branch of the NAACP. It has come to our attention that despite our President Moss's meeting with Superintendent Wanderjeez Rivera and Board President Eileen Felix in August twenty-twenty-four in discouraging a change of the team logo, name, and mascot to Spartans, the Board of Education is still considering, now voted on, this option. In May two twenty, in May twenty-twenty-four, the ISUP Town branch of the NAACP resolved the following in part. Whereas Spartans are a European ethnic group located in Sparta, Greece, whereas the purpose of the mascot change was to move away from racial and ethnic mascots and the reliance on racial and ethnic models as mascots. Whereas not, excuse me.
I don't want to interrupt you, but you have one minute left.
Sure. Whereas no one race or ethnicity should be used to represent any municipality. Therefore, be it resolved that the ISUP Town branch of the NAACP denounces the selection of a race or ethnic group as a mascot for the Brentwood Union Free School District. My last question is about the Long Island Math Fair. When will the students of Brentwood be going to the Long Island Math Fair? I go every year and I have for over ten years. I never see Brentwood there. It is a, it's a shame because we have very many, as you could see, talented students in the area of mathematics as well as other subjects. They deserve the same opportunities to shine in the areas of mathematics as other students on Long Island. So my question is, when will that be?
We will speak with Mr. Marsh and we'll have an answer for you at the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the audience? I don't have it, Andy.
Okay, well, I didn't have questions on it. I just.
Do you want to hand Andy another mic, please?
That's all right, I can talk loud.
Okay.
The tree light, what day and time again?
December, Friday, December thirteenth. Rhonda, what time?
Six to eight. Six to eight. Thirteen, six to eight.
Yes.
And it will be held by the monument?
Usually in that area. It starts usually from the Voss entrance up to Sandaling entrance. There's a variety of activities that the community participates in.
Okay.
Any other questions from the audience?
Otherwise you might throw me out.
You're entitled.
No, I know I'm entitled.
You want to reconsider or? We're giving you the forum.
I still say it should be tabled until June. All right? It should be tabled and it could be brought up again next month, all right? To table it because you already started your removal of items, like the logo that used to be on this floor. All right, we had to do it for anyway, so we get rid of it. All right? But we don't have to make a decision until June. We don't have to vote on it until June.
Thank you, Andy. Anything else?
There are other districts that are still in lawsuits, by the way.
Thank you, Andy.
They want their own.
Is there anything else from the audience? Is there anything? Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your participation. I like to, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-six PM.
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos, I need a second.
Second.
Second by, who's that, Brandon Garcia? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Have a good night, everyone.